Good evening everybody.
Good evening.
Today's meeting of the Two Town Council Board Battle. Just a quick update on there also with debate, there is a forward on the Finance and Government Group, but in the past week I've had the privilege of visiting towns volunteers and meetings and giving a presentation about Two Town Council and our link to the community. I also attended Connection Graduation, this is a group and alcohol programme and it was fantastic thing that because there was so much enthusiasm amongst everybody who's receiving their graduation certificates, it was really inspiring. This week, tomorrow night, we are hosting alongside the churches together a community bill which brings together our diverse community across the crew, so we have representatives from many of the different faiths and churches coming to that little party. Hope it's a start of a network that will be built up. Me and Sally, next tonight, are also going to crew call on Thursday afternoon because they have refurbished and want to officially open that and see what's going on.
What's going on?
Yes, but that's what's post wrapped on. And Saturday, I'm at St Michael's, it's the patron's event, so busy time and Sally's been covering a few as well, so we've seen a lot of calls, but very privileged and excited. So move on to the agenda then, I do want to receive apologies for our unnoted non-attendance.
We've got Camper, sorry, Councillors Pratt, Quayle, Edwards, McKay, Chaplin, Chaplin and Houston.
Thank you.
Yeah, Captain Lee on the short. Until we can go over the back.
So to note declaration on members' interest, members to advise of this declaration on the agenda. So it's in the meeting, that is it, has we had permission to write? So I have a brief premise and minutes of the Two Town Council meeting on the line for June twenty twenty four. I have those proposed and seconded please. Proposed. Is there any inactuaries to run on the other side of the minutes? In that case, are we all in favour? Any gains? Any abstentions? Two abstentions. We put to public participation, this is a period that exceeds fifty minutes, remember to the public to ask questions or submit comments in relation to the problems of gender access. I'd need to be cancelled.
Yep, we've got Public Speaker Glenn Perez, which is to address the council. Would you like to speak for the council?
Right, thanks very much for allowing us to speak today. It's been a bit short notice and I appreciate that what we're about to speak isn't about, isn't happening on your agenda, so thank you that you're allowed to speak. But we've been very long and I did actually have a conversation with Councillor Rhodes, I mean Mr Rhodes, back into last week regarding the subject, which the Gypsy Travel Site proposed, of the council. I'm sure you probably all aware of it. And a little bit history and myself and my team were both on the committee where you may be aware that Cheshire East, back in 2011, decided that they wanted to put the pages in travel sites on the same demand that the council proposed. So we worked together in the committee that basically voted against Cheshire East and in 2012, we were successful and Cheshire East actually withdrew the application. Basically, I've got two points that I'll make, which make all, I should say, two questions which you don't necessarily expect me to answer now, but I'm hoping that somebody or a few of you will take this away and maybe find some information. So the first thing is that we believe that this project of land was subsequently in 2015 pulled back into the framework to be a possible site for Gypsies Travels. That's now been brought forward and we understand that Cheshire East wrote down, he said yes, we will sell the land conditionally to any other Gypsy traveller families or groups for the purpose of them building a private site. So our first question is, a site that was deemed unacceptable or not a correct place for Gypsies Travels in 2012, three years later, it then becomes part of the framework and is accepted. So we'd like to know what changed, we're not aware and it actually changed there and certainly one of the original objectives was highways, what kept the cycling at that field and looking for change with highways through that field or wherever since. So that's the first question we've got. The second is that we don't, we certainly don't know, or we don't know if Cheshire East know, what actually is their target for provision of travel sites? And secondly, do they know how many travel sites, well, really talking pitches, do they actually have in their council board? Because we are aware that this site now is looking at being a private site, not a council site, the council's seventy fifty's or proposal. So it would class as seven, seven is the number that it's been given, seven private pitches. So how many private pitches are currently in Cheshire East and how many do they need? Obviously, they could have their own target, have they done a survey, have they worked that out? And we have certainly good experience, we are aware of several travel sites which in the last few years have expanded considerably. So there is definitely more pitches on there, but we don't know when Cheshire East last did a survey. So do they know how many pitches that are out there? In which case, the basic question, do they actually need seven private pitches at council length? So I don't know if anyone knows any of these things now, or whether anybody can ask questions about that, if it is a couple of weeks.
At this meeting, we don't have any of that information, I'm very sorry. I can't have that, but more than happy to represent those questions to Cheshire East and get a formal response on them and share it with you if that's of any value. So before you leave, would you give me your preferred contact info and a piece of paper on recording and then I'll make sure I'll get to you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks very much for allowing us. Sorry, this is Paul Scobson. And I'm also part of the group that gets to Cheshire East's funds, the original pitch is right on the road, it's against the flood set and several conditions, one laundry, full on this smartphone, it's not a very good one. Second was that the road highways get to the ground, it's a very dangerous road, it's a very dangerous corner, there's no easy access or operation access, it takes you very long. Since that decision was made, 2012, there's been four major earthquakes, unnatural sins in the last eighteen months and one fatality. And we're asking for your support as well, as a town council, to make sure that we can point to Cheshire East and don't drive bush or whatever, and also the travellers as well, because you can imagine trying to pull caravan out of the bed, you know, out of the bed, cars, even there was thirty mile an hour, so cars did not travel around that road for thirty mile an hour. More like forty, fifty, sixty, even in places. And learning that, just that aspect of all the county, making sure that the county don't drive bush or whatever, just to get a safer land and to fulfill one of their obligations, we don't have any obligations, and we need all the seven pitches for travel community. It's also worth noting that the existing travel community here are not in favour of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does she want to come?
No, I was saying, from the fact that the public people are great, now it's solved and we're going to be pressing over the fight, back a few years, my eyes have been put on James and what surprises go from etc. We're going to have a proper.
As Park mentioned, lots of these are questions which we can't answer because it's Cheshire East Council to answer. And yes, if it becomes a planning application on that piece of land, then we will consider it that, the Chair of planning says that it will be considered and we've got a note of these points which we can make at that time. So we can't, we can't be going to commit this until we see any planning application from.
Well.
Yes, the only thing that then people feel like, you won't know what's going on and what's happened, because they're going to sell the land to a private, not going to develop the land as it were originally, they're going to sell this land to individuals on the, also within selling that land to individuals who know, there is more of a lot of land in Cheshire East though, just to the other side of the lake, which is at the moment rented by the council, want to rent to residents. That's the, there is also a vacant land next to the site and you can just see that this is growing naturally out of control eventually.
Thank you, thank you Chair. So when I receive the response from Cheshire East, I'll share it with yourself, the contact you've given me, I'll also share it with members. And if their response is in any way an opportunity for the consideration, the risks or thoughts that are required by this council, I will put it on the agenda for a future meeting that's appropriate to where it is and we'll find a formal position then, which I'll then report to you.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you. Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and first, if we can move on to item five then, which is to receive an update from Committee Chair in relation to the meeting council, the Two Town Council meeting on the.
That's the last one.
Yeah, the eleven, the eleven two. So if I could call upon the Chair of Finance and Government to propose following recommendations, Councillor Gillis.
Yeah, first we start with review progress documents, these are much reached on public policy, tourism policy, volunteer policy, work life, lifestyle policy, our recommended adoption. And don't worry, what is possible amendment to the text there.
I was advised of an oversight of mine, I missed the word real for living wage in particular part seven of nineteen was, which I've now corrected.
Right, okay, so that, so that sounds reasonable. And that the review and amended meaning to the financial plan is recommended for adoption. And happy to have you. We have a second there, all those in favour? Anybody again? So next, it is improved in public services, the Deputy Chair of the Public Services Committee like to introduce recommendations, Councillor Hall, Steve Hall.
The main recommendation, actually, from quite a separate, not as we doubt there before items that were recommended at the time, I believe that they were all to do with the theme of crew projects. And really, to put it in a nutshell, the developments yet to take place in the Cheshire East council of matters that affect that project, such things as the consultation of the council, the council waiting for cycling centres, the green collections and all of which may well have a bearing on those recommendations. So if I take that plan to the, the final decision on these items, we defer to a future meeting when we know what the actions of Cheshire East Council are that can inform that is, that matters. So that's what I'm trying to do, defer to that, defer to those recommendations and we get further discussion as soon as possible. That's okay, that's what we.
Do you have a second to reply to the question? Any comments or questions at this point?
I might think that's what I've come in with, it's the consultation, particularly on green collections, notably with the proposal to, to make black green collections a three weekly event is well worth, well worth members examining many days. And everybody's free to make their comments on that course. I suggest that the members read, read what's contained in the final survey in the questionnaire because that does direct people to the considerations that the council is making. And one of those considerations is that if the three weekly green collection is adopted and the recognition is recognised, they're going to need to be mitigated by way of additional staff, to an undertaking, enforcement, education and things like, for example, the extension of such a forty six levels such as this, and probably through South. So we like this, it's a kind of, it's a power there, it's also a stick. Things that might, proposals that might, might be quite favorable specifically to crew, which is what is out, is recognised as a major topic with a lot of the, and sideways and, and always. It used to say beware of, well, we, it's very difficult, if you care, beware of these proposals that look too good to use because they usually are. It's worth, I'd advise members to take a look at that consultation and find out a bit more about it because it is a hot, it's a hot topic. That's all what we're going to add and to give it a go.
Okay, so what proposal, second then, all those in favour, the Chair, the Deputy Chair.
And I, at this point, I do need to declare an interest in that item and I am in fact, as I am the Cheshire East Chair of the Environment and Community Committee, with that is topic six. And we move on to item C, we go to culture and the aspects of the Chair and the Vice-Chair, I'd like to ask Ben, Councillor Ben White, to propose recommendations.
In case of recent, a long discussion, we want a few considerations please, to consider following, the members recommend a council with an allocation of twenty thousand pounds of reserve to the commission, you're on the side of the town council.
I'd like to see a second to that proposal? Any comments or questions? All those in favour? Any comments? Any abstentions? We're onto item D, the party by the committee, so these are minutes on for noting, after you have those minutes, we're meeting the Chair. Item A, the community committee, I'm asking the Deputy Chair of the Public Service of the committees, committee to introduce the recommendations, Councillor Halliroy. The recommendation is that environment, which is funds, an administrative transfer of funds from one part of a project to another, environment for unspent wellbeing project line be moved to the remembrance project line of two thousand five hundred pounds. In support of that, I would say, the funds are available in the wellbeing project. Delivery of acts of remembrance is a core and very much valued annual service which could very much be valued as part of community wellbeing. If you do have a second there? Any comments or questions before we go to the bell? All those in favour? Or we move on to item F, the personnel committee, the personnel committee like to introduce recommendations, Councillor Gillis.
The recommendations that we accept, we remember the scholarships, they, obviously, the scholarships we've been discussed with various members of staff, and obviously, we've been proposing to accept this, is not okay, we're not.
And do you have a second there? All those in favour? We've been on to item six, to know any updates from members in the town's external meetings. Do you have any comments? Have attended external meetings, Two Town Council Board?
Yeah, probably not, but he's a, he's a resident, he's asked about it and stuff. And basically, I was approached, I'm now, I'm, 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 I'm just wondering where it was, please. He had the same view as these gentlemen. I think he has given me the message, basically, communication with him. So I can leave now, finish up with this, so I did do that, what he suggested. And the question, really, the essence of the question we asked from rest of your approach was why this site, I do propose to be sold, so that directly, what any, what the applications refused, that's why is it not on actual book? That was my, that was the question, so I thought that question to, to the Chair. I'm, 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 to the rest of you to say, um, certainly not to be appropriate, number, or to see that to happen, to, 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 do you, anybody else?
Yes, I attended the, I'm a skilled actor, I'm a great actor, I'm a resident, I'm a, 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 I also, I'm a full south alleyways, we have a community meeting, and that's been an alley champion, but I go out, I keep them up that alleyway, and I send that. It's more like a council pass.
Anybody else that I can talk to, or say anything?
I may get, but I can't, 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 and it's an experiment, it's pretty well technical, that's, and, 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 and,
Councillor White, all of us, it's an opportunity to, 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 respect that. Right, so we move on to item seven, to consider that three payments today between the first day, twenty twenty four to the thirty third of July, twenty twenty four, to the volume of one hundred ninety six thousand six hundred and eighteen five hundred seventeen pence, as recommended by the Finance and Government Committee, would the Chair of the Finance and Government Committee like to propose the recommendations? Happy to be heard. Do you have a second there? Councilor Seven, six, twenty seven, all of you in favour? So, we move on to item eight, to note the update date, the first of July, twenty twenty four, financial material bearing, of course, as recommended by the Finance and Government Committee, these are to note, no resolution is required. We have a few more, and questions, um. Item nine, to receive the recommendations from the Finance and Government Committee related to the draft twenty twenty five, twenty six council budget, I would like to ask the Chair of Finance and Government Committee to introduce the item, and propose the recommendations.
Right. The first recommendation is that it's recommended to council, set a balanced budget, that includes council's ambitions and for its structural. The second is that this recommended council, this is our directive, to show respect and identify potential reductions in overall budget inflation, reduce the potential, or piece of, or, or, that's the recommended council, employer's improvement budget line, if you choose, in light of the council's investment, employer revenues, as well as capital investment, from the town council, and the town investment fund, what the town's player is, are going to pitch about the earmark reserve, and, and, as I already said. That's the grant money, the payment project, is drafted to corporate store, or project under. That's the grant money council, that the one seems square budget line, is amended to a one, a large order, that is, unfortunately, in terms of, um, I'd say, I'd say.
I'd say, second vote for what? Any comments or questions? Councilor Hart.
Interruption, third recommendation, uh, which relates to player's improvement project, that, that is still of the one hundred thousand pound figure for several years, it's been four years in terms of so far. Um, effectively, um, is, 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 capital runs, in this town council, in the tertiary sector, the way you upgrade, in the light of, what, what we manage, such as assets. Um, we've done that, a bit, a bit, three, two such player areas. Um, we've now decided to, to, to fund, uh, maintenance, obviously, the park ranger, um, because obviously, we want to protect the investment in the town council, and to support that, which has been done through, those, of the projects, particularly in town, um, so it makes, makes sense to, 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 to reduce the investment projects, and sort of thing that I've been, I've been sure, to cover, anyway, the next five months, and, and, I'm sure, is that, we, we maintain like an investment, generally, of about a hundred thousand pounds, the, the, the focus is moved away from, of course, effectively, a digital tertiary sector, uh, and, and the two thirty profit space will be to the park ranger, and then the residue profit space, will be extended with earmark reserve, then over here, it's to cover ten, ten, twelve years, that can probably be sufficient to replace those player areas, for that type of, probably need before it's, then, it's, so, it's, 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 it's , maintain what, what we live, it's not just the land, that the, uh, player areas, across the, 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 uh, uh, because there's no doubt, that they're not maintained, what will happen, is just a client, will maybe, will become dangerous or unfit, and that's not something that really, is something which, we can support, I would suggest, but I'm starting to suspect, that this is a sustainable sort of, this is a sustainable sort of budget , I would say, um, but, but, when you, when you invest in, year by year, to, to, to manage, so that's the logic behind that, and the sort of figure that might be made every, point, of course, you're saying, what, thirty, thirty five thousand pounds a year, that's, obviously, uh, fine, I, I, if you like, through this, finance and governance, and, 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 it's, 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 it's always wise to do what we do, um, to, to, to continue, to change, and, the, the, that, will probably, uh, grow, um, sooner than, than, rather than, than, for, for, months, and, and, that's all I want to say, I think.
Councilor White. Just to add to what, so, as you said, I, I think, your explanation shows that it's a very sensible forward. And the one round.
Yeah. So, I'm confused. I'm, I'm the one only, frankly, we're, yeah, I understand the principle, I have a put it on the end, and, 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 so, I'm, 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 so, I'm, I'm, is that, of somebody's life, I don't know, because, I see that, and I'm thinking, well, that's, that's, yeah, we're down, we're down by one range at the minute, I think, so, that's just the question. I'm not confused at all.
Councilor Yate.
Uh, thank you, Matt, I think, the, one of the things that, uh, this is, this is the right thing to do, and it's the right thing, is, we're looking forward to presenting the, the, of the player areas, um, as, as, in the last, in the last decade, and, of course, there will be a good group of player areas in the town, that have not been upgraded, um, therefore, it's even more important, I guess, that the, 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 the park ranger is able to continue as a necessity, of those places as well, because they have not, in the last few years.
Okay, if you have more questions or comments, I'll move to the votes. All those in favour? Okay. We move on to item ten, to consider cancelling the, 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 place collection of the area, and, please, I, please.
Yeah, no problem, the principle is, I, uh, we have a consultation, it's been referenced a couple of times, associated with tertiary proposals, to potentially move to three weekly household waste collections, once every three weeks, just the absolute, um, and in preparation for this meeting, I, um, I drafted some potential response, um, comments, that obviously must be seen with the union program of the council. There goes, I'm so excited, that, uh, I would offer to recap, I've left my glasses, which there, and very well, and, and, hopefully, you all have the opportunity to read it, um, and, if you have any questions, let me know, or if you want to make any amendments or changes in any way, everything is entirely yours.
As you know, uh, if you would, um, I don't think, I agree with what's been, that, um, three weekly residential collections, is appropriate for the inner areas of three, where we've got quite large, um, numbers of vital workers, who, uh, simply, uh, very much rely on takeaway, to issue a lot of, uh, residue, and, and, uh, not all residents, really, recycle to get spent, the, the, residents in other areas, who, who recycle, and I don't think what's, yes, it actually takes, most of, um, what is practical in the, and, the food waste, um, assumes a black bin, uh, sorry, a brown bin, or a green bin, uh, very few residents in the town streets and three, actually have a brown or a green bin, um, so hopefully, the council will be doing, well, actually, that, where, on the ground, and, and, hopefully they will, um, but I think, tertiary school of education, because, but in the area where I'm in, not many people actually use, like, the big ones, so I think it's quite difficult, you know, to, 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 to.
That's amazing.
Actually, I think, um, just, going to address what, as you, as you said, a lot of the houses with eight and nine, are going to be, the new, the, the, especially in the west, Green Mile Road, and a lot of the west, full west, I'm sorry, west street area, and even edges from road, where you have a lot of visiting, there's going to be lots of problems, and there are really big, big, um, black, and, and, already, there are going to typically be, with the, with, that, and, and, having started, um, beginning from the, and, unfortunately, the tertiary is, best control department is not what we need, because that, that had that problem, one of the, the tertiary is, and, it's a lot of problem, a few sets of sites, and, 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 you are all over the place, so if you put it fully, if you have big, what happens, and, and, it's, it's, the, 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 and, and, also, also, so, so, and, 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 chances, and, 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 the, 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 and, the, the, and, 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 when I go, on my ward, the buildings, not always improved, no matter what they did, because they're always going to, and, council, it's, 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 but first of all, first of all, it works, actually, considering, creating this name that was held in the streets, in the name, so, those areas, are going to give us, and where we are, we are, we're not this program, the times that are clearly improved, but we're just going to make it, they're going to make, I'm just saying, I'm, that's my view.
Councilor Hart.
A lot of people, it's like, they, 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 um, basically, depending where the government decides, there's an interesting phrase, usually in the consultation document, it talks about, government has mandated, that we, the collection free waste, which is, we, 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 all of us, so, um, it's, it's, it's not such a mandate yet, it's not clear about the, uh, the collection of residual waste, so, it's still, um, so, I mean, the response that, what, what, from the questionnaire, is, 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 is a number of options, and, and, suggesting response, and, and, very good response, is tend to, apparently, for us, and, and, soon, that all the reasons, either, would be fed forward, uh, as part of a submission from the town council, to, 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 and, and, the other question, was, um, was, was to do with what the tertiary's captured, or how it's affected by such a change, um, to, 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 and, uh, that's an option in the, which, 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 like, education, kind of, kind of education, and, 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 actually, recognizing that it means, that there is, the effect will actually, and I, I, I do like the work, in, uh, three, or, three, three nest, clean collections, et cetera, which is basically saying, not, maybe some of those were free, 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 collections, or, 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 not, um, basically, there's different options, to, 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 that's what we're saying, in fact, that we should be, with such an approach, to mitigate the, the impact of, of waste collections, actually, um, the, the, supposedly, so, if, if, we are, we contain these, we don't want free event collections, we do want the, uh, the, 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 to, 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 um, so, I think, it's, it's quite a way, it's, 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 uh, something I do, I should, 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 I should.
Councilor John Nelson, Councilor Yate.
I agree. In May twenty two, through to May twenty four, just reached, but, since one afternoon, in two, three steps, from nineteen twelve to twenty two, Mill Street, to, 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 to the, to the, to the, to the alleyways, and they, there was a, 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 from, the council, the wardens, so there's a lot of research, and in those two years, one was really meant to clean out, of course, and, and, as they are in lots of other areas in town, and, 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 the other was to, um, try to get the residents, to actually, the system, put a bit out on it, Monday, don't have your way to open all the rest of it, and then, and that, because, in the alleyways, we, we don't have the looks, we have a, 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 coming up there, and we have to save it to, 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 so, for example, question, for example, my alleyway, there are twenty two black bins, on any one of them, and I tidy all them up, against, you know, to enable the last, to, to, many of the foot, uh, if you look in, must be known, when you just stop, to be on those alleyways, it's absolute nightmare, and it's, 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 because, what we've done, we've moved that to question points, if you look at that, and, because, there's now, no resource to go and knock on doors, we're not saying we're not doing that, but, you know, most of those taxis are, H and O's going to, people coming and going all the time, so, they just went, and then it's like, cries about the residents, they, can't, can't, we've got doors, because they've got all these, if you look at the latest picture, there's about twenty bins, there's at least six matches, it's half of that, it's loads of black sand, so, whilst it might, I understand that you're, you're, about saving money, it's an apple, let's just get it right, we're different, and in some areas, if you, whether, you know, a house, you're driving, you're pulling, at the end, that's your responsibility in the way, and, and, not in the world that I, I operate, it's a mess, so to go to three weeks, unless you've got a lot of resource, and it's not going to work out, it's absolutely, and, and, when you have food waste as well, which is probably, I think, you imagine, when those three little green bins came out, and a lot of things, they, they delivered them to every house, like, yes, okay, and how many people, you tell, so you're asking, so, what we've got, is you're going to take it away on a black bin every three weeks, but when I'm, when I'm food waste left on it, it's really bothered, because I put out one, so, anyway, and then in between, you've got a silver bin, hopefully, it's, it's not contaminated, if what you're doing, it might have a fair bit, trainers, and you go, full basket, at the end, of course, not talking about, it's absolute nightmare, what we're doing, so, you know, that, that's a claim from someone that risked three weeks, alleyways, black bins, to have nightmares, it's.
Councilor Eina Hart.
I was just going to point, if, 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 you know, in three weeks, I'm happy, I'm looking to, 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 to,
Councilor Strean, House.
I might be confused here, but, I think, no change. Are the other ones still being empty every two weeks?
The silver bin, yes.
The silver and the round bins are still going to be up two weeks? So, I, perhaps I'm wrong, but, if it's three weeks, then after the second one, they're going to be doing all three bins on the same day, or, or, maybe that's how they're coming? I can't, I'm sorry, tell me the explanation, because I'm confused.
Councilor Yate.
The problem is, of course, is this requirement, to, to, anyways, every week, the one requirement was, uh, that it, 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 it,
So, so, Doc, please excuse me, maybe I'll fit, but, I just can't get my head now, has it gone the same way?